Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best, so pay them a visit, check 'em out. This is Gloves Off.
Well, 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 well. You're listening to Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right then, I'm gonna say words on point, straight forward, no jibber jabber, everybody forward. Issues, facts, and solution, get it at Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right, what a day is a revolution, get it on point with Professor Mutron. Gloves Off, no nonsense issues, politics, community, a better man for Laredo. Gloves Off, a revolutionary show, with everything that you need to know with Professor Mutron. Watch ya!
From the health department, and we're gonna talk about the water crisis that we went through this past week. Good morning, how we doing?
Good morning, how we doing?
How you doing, Mr. Chamberlain, you doing good?
Yes, sir.
So let's talk about this mass hysteria and divide it into different subject matters. What happened?
What happened? Well, what happened is that we've got outlying areas that are being built, we've got new sections of town, and so the consumption of water is not high, but yet we still have to furnish water to those outlying areas. And so the water, like any swim-- if you're familiar with swimming pools, your swimming pool sits there, and you add chlorine and everything is hunky-dory. But then the chlorine dissipates, and you gotta add more chlorine.
Absolutely.
And this is no different, we've got chlorine in the water, but you've got water that's sitting there because it's not being consumed, and so you've gotta add more chlorine. And it's not as simple as just adding chlorine right there, because we don't have a point of distribution for chemicals at the site, because the chemicals are being put at the water plant. And so you've gotta, in essence, release the water that is there, drain it, and then replenish it with new. And so it's a cycle that continues. We don't have any of those type of problems on the north side. We've got two different water plants, we've got the Pico Water Plant that services from what I understand about 13,000 accounts, and then you have the Jefferson Water Plant which services, you know, so much more, but that covers, let's say, south of Canal Street.
If I may interject, which plant covers which side?
The Jefferson Water Plant, and you might know this or not, but covers the Canal Street south. And the Pico Water Plant covers Canal Street north, which is why we've been able to segregate the two sides and lift the boil water alert for the north side. But when we had a citywide deal, it's Texas TCEQ, they saw that where the chlorine levels fluctuated, and they would go below .5, which is their requirement, to above. And so whenever it would go below .5, we would bleed and put new water in, and the levels would go up. And so to be cautious after several instances of this, and we've been watching, we monitor it all the time.
Instances, you mean that the agency had already warned it?
We work with TCEQ all the time.
Were we warned before?
We self-report, we test every day at the water plant.
Okay.
Okay, so we test over there. As my friend, you're to the water plant, I took a tour of the water plant, and there's a faucet that's open inside the lab, and it's continuously running 24/7. And I said, "Somebody left the faucet open," and they said, "No, no, leave it alone." You know, we periodically come in and we test the water, we're gonna make sure that all the levels are correct. And they log it and they send that to TCEQ. But we also have 150 sample areas that we go and we test the waters in different locations, and we log it, and that gets sent out to TCEQ as well.
When was the first warning from TQ?
TCEQ, Technications on Environmental Quality.
When was the first time TCEQ came and said, "You know, you all are below the water"? Was it this past week, has it been a month, has it been?
Well, no, I mean, we work with TCEQ all the time, I mean, you can--
As councilman had just stated, there are situations, you know, when they collect, connect a new water line or there's a break in the water line, the pressure gets low and the chlorine levels can become low as well. So we can test, we can do a routine test sample, and if it is low, we can do a repeat sample, and that's within the guidelines of TCEQ. So we've had situations where there is a low sample, but we can go back the next day, and it's right back above the threshold that it's supposed to be at, which is the .5.
Okay.
So those happen sporadically, and those happen in every city, that their chlorine levels can be low on one day, and then the following day for a repeat test, you can have the chlorine levels bring up to the threshold that they're supposed to be at.
When will they say, "No water consumption"? How many days does that have to be low for TCEQ to come in and say, "You know what"?
It's kind of unique, in this sense, in this case, from what I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the levels were inconsistent, because one day you could be below .5, and the next day you can be at 2.0. And that's us trying to correct, it's a balancing act.
Sure.
It's an everyday, hour-on-the-hour balancing--
You're juggling.
Yes, and so you have your water master who's sending water, you have your testers, in our case, we've got the health department that's on top of this. And because we have those safeguards in place, the system worked. We got alerted, we sent the--
The test?
The tests. And what's been reported recently by TCEQ is that a customer complained, and they complained and they came to test, and, "Hey, look, it's below .5."
But who tested, TCEQ or the customer?
No, TCEQ came, but to that customer. But that customer called in not because, "Oh, I detect low chlorine levels in the water," no, that didn't happen. That customer had a private system and was getting some consistencies in their reading. So they actually called TCEQ to come and help them with their system. And upon that, the chlorine level was low at that point. So at that point, they contacted the health department, they contacted our utilities, "Hey, we're getting this reading. What readings do you have"? Well, again, different points of area, we got some really good readings and then some low readings, and in this case, in that particular area was low at that time. So we're given 24 hours to correct, and so you correct, and so now we're fine. But then you check, let's say, a week later, and we're back down low. So the levels were constantly changing, and that's when TCEQ said, "You know what? Let's just do a bleed, let's do a burn as they're calling it, and we'll do a citywide boil until we can figure this thing out."
Precautionary.
Yeah, just--
And this happened on Friday or this happened on Saturday? When did this health department find out, and when was this sent out to the public?
So the health department found out by alert from the utilities director. The utilities director and the health department director do communicate and share this information with city management and city council. So that information, I am not 100% aware on when that conversation did happen, but all the operation to inform the public happened Saturday.
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 And because what happened with, and my concern is, okay, we've got the testing, we're low, below, and so on and so forth, we're gonna take the necessary precautions, we're gonna follow protocol, and I think that's what happened, right? Now, what happens is a mass hysteria.
Sure.
Okay, when this went out there and it hit social media and so on and so forth. I was uptown a Saturday, I came in a Saturday night, and we had been talking back and forth, we had a tournament over in Fort Worth, and when I came in, I didn't pay attention to anything, and came in very late. But on the morning, I had a call from my father, says, "You know what, there's no water. I checked on Facebook, everybody was complaining." I said, "You know what, I'm gonna go to the Family Dollar Tree." And as we talked before, you know, when we were there, is, I walked in there and went to go look for water, there was none. There was an older lady with a cart of four little small cases of water, about to pay, and a couple came in. And I said, "Is there any more water?", and she said, "No." So the guy, the husband or boyfriend or whatever, that couple went over and grabbed the lady's water. And I said, "Sorry, buddy, ain't gonna happen, not today. You know, she got here before us, and it's the lady's water." Well, we had a little interaction, the worst, and I guess he figured out what level of the food chain was at. You know, the lady paid and I escorted her outside. When I clicked on Facebook, I saw that there was a huge line in champs, there was a bunch of, there was a five little Walmart, and this thing was escalating in proportion. So we're dealing with the issue of the water, but it's the mass hysteria that really what people got scared about and everything that was going on. I mean, that danger that was placed onto the citizens of Laredo, somebody needs to come forth and say, "You know what, somebody messed up."
It's a delicate situation, you put out, but TCEQ has their guidelines as to what you have to do.
Correct, and that was followed.
You follow those guidelines. So you, we're in the age of transparency, and you need to let the public know what's going on. So you put out the information, and herein lies the problem. So you put some information out, and you've got somebody out there that interprets that information differently. And so they put out their version of what they interpreted. Rather than to get the statement from this person and share it, they decide that they're going to talk and they're going to write their version of what they think they heard. And so they send that out. Somebody else is listening to this, and so they put out their version of what it is. So it's always skewed. We gotta work on how we can better do that, you know, public service announcements.
Exactly right, because you had some public announcements that people were confused about, that the north side could not have water, it's a whole city, it's also put on Saturday, correct?
Yeah, but the reason that that happened is that when TCEQ said, "Well," because we said, "We've tested these areas, and they're on the south side, all right? And these are the areas we tested," and they said, "Well, send us those maps. It's Saturday, late, okay." And so TCEQ said, "You know what? We're just gonna put the whole city of Laredo on a boil notice, and that way, we're covered, all right?" And so they decide all of the city of Laredo. Thanks to Judy Saffarinie and Tracy King and Richard Raymond--
Who stepped up.
Who stepped up, you know, Senator Saffarinie really stepped up to the plate, Tracy King did too, they called Tracy King, King down to Laredo.
That's what leaders are about.
Yes, anyway, so they got TCEQ on the horn, and we were able to produce those maps saying, "All right, at least let's separate--
The plants.
--if we can't do it in the segments that we tested, the areas that we tested, which is south of Market actually, then at least we've got two water plants. One feeds this side, the other one feeds the other side, at least release this side."
And that's what happened.
And that's what happened. They agreed to release the other side.
And then you had social media take off, and it's, the north side gets the best, the south side gets-- And then it took off in that thing, which is not the case, it's just a different plan to--
But also, if you look at the tanks, the water tanks, consumption is different in different areas.
Sure, of course.
And I mean, you might have more irrigation going on on one section versus another section, so the consumption is different. The water stays sitting there at the tank on the southern part because we're developing all of that part, and you might have one or two residences, and you might not have any irrigation because they haven't put it together. Or you might not have a swimming pool because they haven't done it yet. So as a result, the water sits there. On the north side, you know, people are using the water all the time for irrigation, for pools, everything, you've got, you know, different types of establishment.
Now, let's get back to the long lines, let's get back to that issue. That learning process, I think the police should have been notified too, to go out there and start--
Police was notified, we had police, we had the health inspectors, we had code enforcement--
Taking care of those lines over there, I think we should have sent a unit, I think we have to be better--
I think--
This is our learning point, because God forbid we do hit something big, okay? God forbid, because right now, in my opinion and the opinion of many, Laredo got an F+ this Sunday.
Definitely the police department did respond, I have seen that. But in regards to public education, the city of Laredo Health Department does host a Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program that we're consistently going out into the community and educating the community on how they need to respond in the event of an emergency. So with that staff, of course, we wish the staff was 85, 100 people who can do this throughout the day, every day, in all geographic locations of the city. They are in and between the city, and every event that they can be at, sharing information on how they're supposed to respond in an emergency event.
Understood, is there any way we can get that, for it to be loaded up and passed on on social media in case something like that happens? Like a small video, this is going on, and you know what? It's like a, like the service announcement, you know, the old ringtone, ee, ringing in the radio. You know what I'm saying, because believe me, it's, social media is basically where everybody's at.
It's what drives--
And that's who, everybody's on their phone, and everybody's gonna be on there, you know? And wherever you're at, they're checking that social media, get an alert.
And that's something that the health department did do on Saturday, to let the public know, "Don't cause a panic." The citywide ban is going to be remediated as of now, we're just waiting for our elected officials and city officials to work to reduce that citywide ban.
I saw yours, I saw the police, and I saw the mayor's, and I saw a bunch of others, take those and add to it that we had talked about, okay? And what happens is, I think a video of that nature, I think it's something that people can pay attention to. You know, learning process, man. Laredo's a hell of a city, they know that, you know, so we need to stay on top of that. And, you know, and where does the fault lie? Not on the people, not on the citizens, because it's not the citizens' fault that's gonna happen. Where does the fault lie?
Well--
Or where does investigate, where has the investigation taken? Are you all still under investigation?
We're still under investigation, we're still trying to figure it out. My instruction is, "Let's right the ship, let's fix it." All right, now that the ship is moving forward, and we got everybody off of that boil, all right, let's figure out what happened, where are we at? You know, let's see who's talking to whom, where, what's going on. Once that dust settles, and we'll figure out what happened. But it is a balancing act when you're talking about chemicals and the way we're set up, the way the engineering of our water system is, and so we have to look at all those aspects and make sure that they're the right aspects. Keep in mind, the utilities department has been running our water for years and years and years and years, and this is one instance in--
Not a year, not a year, of course. The problem that we have, everybody started blaming everybody, you know, from the mayor all the way down. And I can say, tell you this, it's not the mayor's fault, it's not your all's, councilman, not because you're sitting down here, but not the councilman's fault, not the city manager's fault. It's right now with the department, utilities, and so we have to find out what occurred there. And if this is gonna be something that's gonna continue moving forward, is it something that is mechanical through the investigation, is it something that, was a product was not enough, maybe you have to buy a different-- You know what I'm saying, there's a lot of different variables that go in there, and that needs to be studied. And that's where it's at. But when people start putting everybody together and start blaming Dan and Bob, and that has nothing to do with this.
I see on social media, "Okay, well, I want heads to roll, and who's accountable, and we gotta make somebody," and you know what, that's mass hysteria.
You know, and I'm the first person, if it comes out from the director, he needs to go, replace him.
Somebody has to be accountable.
I understand what you're saying, and the person that it is, I'm sorry. You know, because number one, it's not like the pound, it's not dogs, these are human life.
Sure.
Understand.
Now, let me tell you that our system that we have in place worked.
Oh, no.
You get a detention here, and the first thing you do is you alert the proper authorities, the state, and the local, the health department, that's key, that's the first ones you pick up the phone and say, "All right, we're having problems in this area, you know, let's talk about this."
I think that is something that I think everybody's understanding, people are understanding, that protocol was followed. Now, let's talk about boiling water and the safety of the water, because that's another issue. You know, people were saying, "We can't boil it, you can," especially for some of those bacteria that's in there, some of the funguses. What can you say on the health department?
So definitely for the individuals that are not within the water boil ban zone, do not need to be boiling their water, they can use it for showering, for brushing their teeth, for bathing their children, anything that they need it for. For the individuals who are in the boil ban areas, it is a precautionary boil ban as well to let them know that they need to take this step, because we have identified specific areas of those regions that are low, but we need to let everybody know in that region, they need to follow the steps. So boiling your water would definitely mean boiling as much as you can, but first--
This is for consumption, for drinking.
Yeah, for consumption, for drinking.
Not for washing your clothes, or washing your dishes, or--
For consumption.
For consumption, at minimum for three, for three minutes, and you wanna make sure that the containers--
On a rolling boil.
That the rolling boil, that the containers that you're gonna put them in are also clean as well. So you're gonna have to probably use the boiling water, clean out the container, throw that water out, and then refill with new clean boiled three-minute boiling water for consumption.
And that's it, anything else that you'd like to add on towards?
And we would continue to like to say is that testing is ongoing as of right now. The chlorine levels are being analyzed as well, as we have not had any bacterial growth in the recent past, and as of the newer samples that have came in as well. So there is no bacteria, but that boil water alert is to make sure that we are safe. And that's the main priority, is to make sure that all residents of the community are safe, and especially for those that are in the water boil areas.
Councilman, anything else?
Oh, I think we said it all. The key here, the thingy here is, you know, don't panic, we're okay, we're gonna be okay, we're fixing this. Hopefully by Wednesday, we'll have lifted the boil. There is no bacteria that we have found, the chlorine is there to kill any bacteria, the levels of chlorine have been low, we're fixing that. But even when they were low, the water still had chlorine, you know, some chlorine in there. And so, again, we tested and tested and retested and found that there was no bacteria present in the water. So you shouldn't be getting sick, but as a precaution, if you're gonna consume, if you're gonna drink the water, boil it.
And now we've got stores that I think they're having water backup again.
I think so.
I think so now, you know--
The stores are back up, and you also can access the water trees and the water mills that are in and that are outside of the boil water bans to be able to acquire water as well if you do not wish to boil your water at home.
That's right, now, here's another thing that's important. The city is putting out some trucks giving out water. And we're gonna have three distribution points, one of them is at the health department located at--
At 2600 Cedar Avenue, but it'll be on the Maryland side, which is the west side of the building.
Okay. That's correct. And then the other one is at the McKendrick--
Library.
Library, and then Independence Hills. And let me just verify. Independence Hills at the regional park located at 1102 North Matida Drive. At the McKendrick, at the McKendrick Library located at 1920 Palo Blanco. And at the health department located at the 500 block of East Stewart, at the corner of Maryland and Stewart Streets. That's where we are going to be distributing water bottles. And you just, in order to receive those water bottles, you've got to show an address, that that's where you live in the areas that are still--
That are being affected, so can they, driver's license? What identification to tell the folks?
Driver's license of work, or a utility bill, or something. But if you show that you live in the affected areas, you can get the water.
Well, number one, keep on doing it, let's move forward. And just, you know, Bob and we even keep fighting for it.
You know, Gloves Off is, does a really nice public service. I know you talk about a lot of issues, and when it comes to issues like this, I have seen your webpage, and you were not part of that mass hysteria, and so I really appreciate you sticking to the facts and to the points. That's a huge service to our community, so all I'd say is, keep watching Gloves Off, and thank you for it.
No, we have to, you know, there's a difference. There's a difference between Merculio Martinez, the individual, probably thrown the individual, probably thrown gloves off, Merculio the councilman. If I say something on my personal page, it's me, in my opinion. This is not towards affecting anybody, understand what I'm saying? It feels like if you're at home and you said, "You, well, the cowboys suck." Well, yeah, well, you know, the Saints did well, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's just there, it's not, does not mean that it's the city, it does not mean that it influences you otherwise. And I think that's the way we have to be. The problem that we have is, is that that story, you say this to somebody else, and you say it to somebody else, by the time it gets to the 15th person, it's a different story.
Completely different.
I would have never said anything if I did not witness what I witnessed at that Family Dollar. You understand?
And that happened, yeah, absolutely.
And when you see somebody try to take an older lady's water, I'm sorry, but it ain't gonna happen, now this one, you know? Understand? And we have to--
We, as citizens, have to step up to the plate.
And that's what needs to happen. I want to thank you again, Mr. Chamberlain.
Thank you very much.
Councilman, continue your work forward. Until next time, remember, boil your water and listen to the addresses where, if you're in that affected area, for you guys to go get some water. Till next time, peace. Until next time, peace.